Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. During this meeting, a designated convention center staff person will run the Zoom aspect so that each commissioner may be able to focus on the meeting rather than the technology. This person will be able to advance slides in a presentation, see who is physically raising their hand, and control the ability to mute participants. All Planning Commission members should mute their microphones when they are not speaking, ensure that there's no background noise, and that computer alerts are silenced. Commissioners should keep their cameras on for the duration of the meeting except during announced breaks. When a commissioner wishes to speak, they will physically raise their hand, wait for the chair to call on them, then unmute themselves before speaking. Talking over each other will cause excessive delay. If at any time during the meeting a commission member gets disconnected from the meeting, the meeting will briefly pause to give them time to return to the meeting. All matters requiring commission action shall be presented to the Planning Commission by the planning staff and the applicant. In situations where planning staff is the applicant, there will be only one presentation. Tonight, we have no public hearings. All votes will be roll-call votes. After proper motions are made and consistency statements read into the record, the chair will call each member by name. Each member should clearly state their vote, aye or nay, one at a time. After votes are cast, the chair will state the outcome of the vote and the action. This process requires extra patience and extra time. The chairs should be prepared to frequently restate comments and questions and ask for a green light to move on. Items heard and voted on tonight will be heard at the August 17, 2021 City Council meeting. Our first item is to approve the minutes from July 7, 2021. Do we have any discussion? If not, we will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Lennon has moved to approve the minutes from July 7, 2021. Do we have a second? Commissioner Woodruff has seconded. And we'll do a voice vote on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The minutes for July 7, 2021 have been approved. And our next item is a presentation by Ms. Rachel LaCoe. She is the Senior Long Range Planner for New Hanover County and works with the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, so she's going to give us an update.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you for having me this evening. Again, I'm Rachel LaCoe, Senior Long Range Planner for New Hanover County. That's where our housing community development initiatives are housed. I serve as a staff liaison for the Joint New Hanover County and City Wilmington Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, and I'm here tonight to give a brief update on the workforce and affordable housing initiatives. So, as a reminder, the committee was tasked with overseeing the development for a comprehensive housing study, the initiation of ideas for a public awareness effort around workforce housing, and the development of a long-term work plan and projects that further workforce housing in the county and region. So, following my updates from this meeting in March, the comprehensive housing study and survey were finalized and presented to the Board of Commissioners and City Council. The Workforce Housing Advisory Committee also presented their housing work plan. Next slide, please. What the study found was that housing gaps are significant across the spectrum of affordability. There's an estimated housing gap of almost 11,000 in rental units and over 13,004 sale units across the county over the next 10 years. These estimates were based on current policies and initiatives, demographic, economic trends, and all available and planned residential units. What you can see is, really for the rental side of things, the market can address some of the price points for households earning above 60% of the area median income. So, as long as we allow for the production of those units, the market can provide those price points. The lower end of the market, particularly under 30% area median income range, that's where we're going to really need some assistance. Those products are typically delivered in low-income housing tax credit or other highly subsidized products. In the for-sale market, the housing gap is greatest in the 200,000-plus market. And again, for the most part, the market may be able to produce these, but will require diversity of housing types to get to those lower price points, particularly at that 200,000. As the price range goes below that 200,000, you'll need to look at specialized programs such as Habitat, the Land Trust, Cape Fear Collective to help fill those gaps. Overall, though, housing stock is needed across the board at a variety of price points. This is important because if housing does not exist at all price points, higher-income earners will buy down, leaving the fewest options for those with the lowest incomes. Next slide, please. The Workforce Housing Advisory Committee developed recommendations and tools and strategies to guide New Hanover County and the City of Wilmington's efforts in addressing the housing affordability needs. These recommendations are designed to increase the supply of residential units, retain our existing affordable housing stock, and increase residents' access to these homes. They're organized into four types of strategies: land use, programs, advocacy and education, and funding. Next slide, please. Land use policies can lower development costs and the price at which the market can provide housing. It can also increase the market's availability to meet demand, which can decrease the price of new rental housing and slow the loss of existing affordable housing. These recommendations include encouraging diversity in housing stock by allowing and incentivizing missing-middle housing, duplexes, townhomes, and minimizing barriers for infill development, including accessory dwelling units. As you know, the city's planning department has considered these recommendations through their LDC updates. Next slide. For programs, just leveraging existing programs to create or preserve more units. Next slide, please. Then, advocacy and education, educating the public on the public benefit of housing affordability in the community. Next slide. And finally, funding, establishing a stable funding mechanism to support the efforts of producing, preserving, and increasing access to affordable housing. City Council and the Board of Commissioners decided in June to move forward with pursuing a housing bond. The bond itself will be divided into buckets to increase the housing stock, improve the existing stock, and increase access to housing. The priorities for funding will focus on making more units available, both through new stock and preservation of existing units, because we know that we cannot increase access to units that do not exist. Next slide, please. So, finally, we're currently in the first phase of an action plan. As the bond conversations continue, it will help shape goals, public awareness campaigns, and future programs. Look forward to giving you more updates in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. LaCoe? Thank you for your time and for sharing your update with us and for all your hard work on this important issue. Moving on to new business. Item number one is to repeal the current Chapter 18 Land Development Code in its entirety and replace it with a new reformatted and modern Chapter 8 Land Development Code. And we will have our planning director, Mr. Harbeck, do a presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Lyle. And again, thank you, all members of the Planning Commission. You have an important job, probably the second-most important board in the city next to the council in a very rapidly growing city. So, your work here is much appreciated. Give me some thought just to how to set the stage for tonight's meeting. I have one page, large print. As we consider passing judgment on the draft Land Development Code this evening, I'd have several questions that might be worth asking ourselves. One, does the new LDC do a better job? These are some relevant questions that we hear a lot. Does the new LDC do a better job of protecting trees? Does it seek to improve the appearance and function of our major streets? Does it offer greater opportunities for missing-middle housing, such as accessory dwelling units, duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, et cetera, all those housing types that fall between a single-family home and a large apartment complex? Does it provide incentives for affordable housing, incentives that our city council has been asking for for quite some time? About halfway through here. Does it reduce the amount of asphalt associated with excessively large parking lots? Does it make development review more streamlined by reducing special-use permits and many other discretionary reviews and discretionary language throughout the code? Does it encourage greater development density where it belongs, near services, jobs, and transit? Does it promote walkability, bikability, and transit use over greater traffic congestion? That was the number-one concern that came out of the comprehensive plan in 2016. Does it reflect the wishes of thousands of Wilmingtonans as reflected in the 2016 comprehensive And lastly, is it perfect? And the answer there is no. Can it be improved? Yes, endlessly. The final question I would ask, however, is, does this Land Development Code move the needle in the right direction on all of these issues? And I would offer a clear yes to that. I'd like to conclude before turning this over to Assistant Director Satterfield, is to emphasize that even as this ordinance is moving forward, hopefully soon, there will be additional opportunities for fixing glitches, for making adjustments to it, just as we've done since the last meeting relative to pods, the temporary storage units, and similar issues like that. Those efforts to fix glitches will be available even before the ordinance becomes effective, because even if the ordinance were to be adopted, or the two ordinances, I guess, if the two ordinances were to be adopted on August 17 by City Council, there will be a period of time between that adoption date and the effective date when we will continue to track additional needed improvements that can then be brought forward in what we call, we used to call them, code cleanups. And that will also continue during calendar year 2022, probably on a quarterly or three times-a-year basis, where as we uncover things that will only be discovered after we begin to use the code, when we discover those things, we can then bring forward several code amendments in a batch to continue to improve the code, because no new code has ever been adopted that didn't have to go through a debugging process in the first two to three years. I can tell you that. So, with that, I just wanted to assure you that this is not the be-all, end-all decision of the year, but it is an important one. So, with that said, I thank you again for your hard work and your service to the City of Wilmington, for your vision as to what we can be over the next, really, 20 to 40 years, given the duration of our passcode. And I thank Mr. Satterfield and Christine Hughes for their hard work in doing the hands-on drafting. So, Ron, you're on board.
Tonight is not a public hearing or legislative hearing, as the chair has already indicated. We've had two public hearings or two legislative hearings already. One of those was on June 24th, the other one was on July 23rd. Tonight's purpose of what we wanted to do primarily is present some of the changes that have occurred since the last meeting, go over those. But this slide here, you've seen it in the last two or three presentations that we've done, is just to be indicative of the changes, or excuse me, of the process of how we got here to where we are today, starting out with the comprehensive plan being adopted in 2016. And from that, we then moved forward to implementing the comprehensive plan, and the main implementation tool for land development is the Land Development Code. So, we've been in the process of rewriting our Land Development Code primarily since this comprehensive plan was adopted. We are using the feedback and the policies of the comprehensive plan to guide our, the vision, if you will, of Land Development Code. So, the comprehensive plan is the vision, and now we're trying to implement that vision through our standards. City Council adopted it in ad hoc committee to go over, to work with staff and to provide us some direction, and we've had nine meetings with them. We've also had going, starting somewhere in 2018, I believe, more than 20 presentations in the city council. Some of those were topical, talking about parking or trees or infill development as an example. We've had six Planning Commission presentations, and they were individual articles as we released them to the public. We had a joint meeting with Planning Commission and Council just to talk about trees and signage. You may recall, I think that was sometime in February of this year. I may be mistaken on the date. We began releasing drafts of the online as each article was released in February of 2020. So, there were opportunities for feedback then. When those drafts were released, we would send out an email blast that started out with about 2,100 identified stakeholders and citizens who had expressed interest in city government. At some point, that list dwindled down to roughly 1,500 or so, as folks asked to be taken off the list, or we got kickbacks, emails that were not returnable, and those kind of things. Then, beginning in April of 2021, we released the full composite draft, and we met with many stakeholder groups, as requested by them, to present these, the articles, to talk about the code, to talk about whatever they wanted to talk about. And then, most recently, we've had three work joint meetings with Planning Commission and City Council. One of those was on June 17, follow-up on June 24, and again on July 23. The latter two, we also had legislative or public hearings. So, that's how we got to where we are today. So, again, the purpose of the presentation tonight is to talk about what changes have been made regarding or to the code since the last meeting on July 23. And we also will briefly go over some of the zoning map changes, because there is a separate, should you take a vote tonight, there is a second, a separate vote, if you will, on the zoning map changes. Ms. Hughes has presented those to you, I believe, at your June 24 meeting. So, the first change I want to identify are those made for accessory dwelling units, or as we call it, EDS. And based on the feedback that we believe we heard from the conversation between Planning Commission and City Council, we now have proposed to eliminate that minimum parking standard. We had it, you may recall, we released the versions without a parking standard. Then, we thought we heard put a parking standard in, so we came back on the 23rd with one parking space, and based on that conversation around 23rd, we thought we heard take that space away. So, now this version that you have no longer has that parking space required. We also heard from the feedback at the July 23 meeting, both from some of the public as well as a conversation during the meeting with, between Planning Commission and Council, let's eliminate the standard or the requirement that prohibited a separate utility meter. So, that has been removed from your draft. Outdoor seating areas, we reformatted this section. The rules or the standards are pretty much the same as we presented to you previously, but we've reformatted it for a better flow and to basically be able to regulate and enforce what we actually meant. So, it's a better flow to the way it's being reorganized. We've inserted a table now with the separation requirements. We think the way it's been reformatted will work better for the users, including staff. Mr. Harbeck just alluded to this as an example of a change that we've made. We have included portable storage containers or pods. You may have seen the pods. It actually literally says pod on the side of it, storage container, that someone may bring into the yard for a temporary timeframe. Maybe they're doing construction or need some temporary storage on their site. We've inserted that use in our temporary use table. It's allowed in all of our districts for a maximum of six months in a rolling 365-day We've also amended a couple of definitions. One is outdoor seating and activity area, and the other was nurseries and greenhouse. You may recall that both of those came up during the presentation, the 23rd. Little confusion on what is a nursery versus a retail garden shop. So, we believe we clarified that in our definitions. It's an outdoor seating area. We have modified the definition to be consistent with the state's definition regarding the smoking, whether you smoke indoors or outdoors. Say of a restaurant as an example, what constitutes indoors versus outdoors? And so, we've modified the definition to be consistent with that state definition. Just real quickly on some zoning map changes, and I won't go through a lot of slides, but primarily, we were looking at some minor edits, meaning that we were, if you look at the zoning map, sometimes it was not, it was, it may have been shifted a couple of feet just to make sure it follows a property line. We've also, zoning lines have been extended to the street center lines. We removed some split zone boundaries at Autumn Hall. When Autumn Hall was rezoned to mixed use in the early 2000s, they created a, I'm going to call it a spite strip, if you will, they intentionally rezoned their property so there was not a protest petition filed against their rezoning. So, we have now moved, our proposal would move that line to encompass all of Autumn Hall property as mixed use. There's some CD, conditional district, and related rezonings, and those were conditional zoning districts that maybe improved five, 10 years ago, and nothing has ever happened to those sites. One example, I believe, one of the gentlemen that spoke at your meeting on the 23rd, kind of, he let you guys know that he will be coming soon to rezone some property over on Giles Avenue, as an example. There was a, that was a rezoning, conditional district rezoning approved in early 2000s for multifamily, never has been developed, so our proposal was to rezone it to residential R10. He's going, he may come in for an office development with a conditional district attached to it. Airport AI, the airport industrial zoning, we are eliminating that. So, any AI zoning or map, we want to make sure we're assigning it to something, and we're proposing light industrial. Same with Main Street mixed use. Our proposal is to eliminate Main Street mixed use from the code, so we need to zone those properties somehow into something, and we're proposing urban mixed use. And we are removing overlay districts, except for the historic district overlay. So, our floodplain overlay is being removed, but we still have floodplain standards. The Wrightsville Avenue corridor overlay is being removed, but we still have standards for development along Wrightsville Avenue. South 17th Street overlay is being removed, but we still have standards for that street. Wrightsville Avenue, excuse me, I'm sorry, Dawson-Wooster corridor overlay is proposed being removed, but we still have standards. Majority of that property has been rezoned to urban mixed use, just naming those as examples. The special highway overlay district, also known as the SHOD, along Eastwood Military Cut-off roads. We have proposed to remove that from the regulations, but we have street fronting standards that we believe are applicable for Eastwood Road and Military Cut-off. So, we may have proposing eliminates overlays, but we do have standards that still would allow some design criteria, if you will, to be applied along those properties consistent with, or even in our opinion, somewhat better than what's already out there. That is the gist of this conversation or this presentation tonight. Certainly, we're here to answer questions. If there's specifics that you want to go over regarding what I presented tonight or other issues, or even the zoning maps, we're prepared, staff is prepared to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Satterfield. Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ron, I have a question on definition of outdoor seating activity area recently added, I guess, with maybe input from Councilman Anderson. It reads, "An unenclosed area without a roof or other overhang covering and no more than three walls or side coverings." That seems counterintuitive, because the more sidewalls you have, the more sound buffering you have, and I wondered if it should be no fewer then.
Commissioner Bowman, if you don't mind, I'm going to let Ms. Hughes respond to that question. She had worked on, I believe, trying to determine what the state requirements were in that case.
Okay.
I don't have the text right in front of me, so it's possible that I made a typo, but the intention was that we included the same standards that are, that's in the statutory language related to outdoor areas for smoking. So, essentially, if it has three walls and a roof, it's inside, it's indoors.
Okay. Well, that, Ms. Hughes, that was going to lead to my next question. Now, we've had this picture of high wire brewing up several times, and I personally think Councilman Anderson is going in the right direction to try to have a way to relax the 1,000 feet. But you've got a facility that has roll-up garage doors, it's pretty commonplace these days, and typically have a band stage inside. And then, outside, as part of the total development, you also have a outdoor seating and activity area. So, I would assume that if the doors are open, that you have a band inside, that the 1,000-foot would not need to apply because you are considered inside and not an outdoor seating or activity area.
That would be my interpretation as well. Anything that's happening inside the building, even if that garage door were rolled up, would be considered indoors.
Yeah. You have the ability to close the door, and I think that's important. And I think Councilman Brady had an insightful point in the last legislative hearing, but I, there may be reasons beyond this purview that could govern that, and that is, if we're measuring the sound that is the nuisance, we should measure it on the receiving side or the complaint side rather than at the source. But if you have the ability to close doors, should there be a complaint? You know, problem solves pretty easily.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Commissioner Cortez?
I wanted to, I, I'm not sure when I should bring this up, whether it should be with staff or just as discussion with the Planning Commission. I sent an email today discussing bringing our new Land Development Code to be identical when it comes to the CAMA Plan as far as defining waterfront lots and community docks and waterfront communities. And I'm not sure that I understand why we haven't added that to our new Land Development Code.
Well, I got your email after 4 o'clock today. Quick comparison, as I understand it, I don't believe that it's inconsistent with that standard. The definition we are proposing is consistent with the current definition for community boating facilities. One thing-
Let me, if I could.
Sure.
I did bring this up back at the very beginning when we started with the, with the section on definitions, and I have a note there that I had suggested at that time that we make sure that we are in compliance with what we consider to be our joint plan with the New Hanover County, the CAMA Plan. And the way that works is that the federal government gives guidelines of what they want the coastal communities to comply with, and the different states along the coast say, okay, fine, we're going to comply with that, and they write their own state CAMA Plan. And then, the state allows municipalities to write a CAMA Plan that reflects what the state and the federal require, and then we can administer it ourselves. And so- And so based on that, in the CAMA plan, it limits community docks to waterfront communities, and waterfront communities are defined as communities having at least five contiguous waterfront lots. In the past, the city has referenced these definitions to deny community docks to communities with less than the requisite five lots. Now, I would just go on to say that throughout much of 2019, we reviewed the Land Development Code Amendment regarding docks and piers. The city wanted a more restrictive ordinance than that was, than that which was found in the joint Wilmington-New Hanover County CAMA plan. And although the CAMA plan was acknowledged as the guiding document on coastal development, the city asserted the right to adopt ordinances that are more restrictive than those in the CAMA plan. Now, if we're going to allow community docks in communities that have one waterfront lot, rather than the required five, that's far less strict than what CAMA would allow. In 2020, a new community of seven lots with one waterfront lot was granted a major permit to construct a community dock with seven slips, a covered platform, and a floating dock. This was granted even though there were concerns cited by the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission Habitat Conservation Division regarding water depth and the potential for shoaling of the waterway. This is in Hewlett's Creek. When the CAMA major permits coordinator was asked how this was approved, the response was that these CAMA restrictions were removed from both the city and the county's 2016 comprehensive plan, and so therefore they didn't apply. Let me just say that, I would like to read, since I, and full disclosure, I live on Hewlett's Creek, and I, I've seen, you know, what's happening there. Here's a report from Maria Dunn, the Habitat Conservation Division. "We reviewed the permit application, and we have concerns regarding the proposal and potential direct and indirect impacts the project may have on aquatic resources. Fixed structures often influence shoaling of waters in the vicinity of the structure. If shoaling occurs after structure construction, or if future excavation of material is desired to enhance structure use, the New Hanover County Division of Conservation Resources would view the, the request to excavate material as new dredging within PNA, Primary Nursery Area, and not support the proposal. We also believe the ingress and egress of vehicles to the end, to the structure, as well as the floating platform, may adversely affect bottom sediments and aquatic habitats due to the design of the facility and shallowness of water depths." So they've already expressed some concerns, and if that area of the creek shoals in because a very large community dock was allowed to be built, the people west of that community will have no access to get out of the creek. And let me just add that while this seven-lot subdivision was approved for a community dock last year, there's been a recent proposal, or a recent request for another, my glasses, seven or eight, eight-lot subdivision who's requested a community dock. They have two waterfront lots, just like Peregrine Way, and they've been denied a permit for a community dock. So there's inconsistency. It depends on who's interpreting it, which document they're referencing, which document we decide has precedence. And I just don't understand why we don't want to bring these two very important documents into compliance with each other.
I believe we have a response from staff?
Yeah, Catherine Thurston, zoning administrator, and I'll do my best to address that. I've been working in city zoning for the past 15 years, and I'm not aware that we're interpreting the CAMA plan inconsistently in our ordinance. We are still using the 2006 New Hanover County-City of Wilmington joint CAMA plan. Our code doesn't necessarily mimic the language in that. We are allowed to be more restrictive, and there are places in our code that we have decided to do that. I don't know that we've been, we can't be less restrictive, because any plans still have to comply with the CAMA policies. That's just enforced by a different entity. It doesn't necessarily need to be in our zoning document to be regulatory for DCM. But if, if the concern is that we don't have all of the same definitions that they do, Christine and I chatted about this just a moment ago, we don't have an issue with adding additional definitions that are consistent with the CAMA plan that's still in effect for the city.
I'm just unclear as to how this particular community dock was allowed to be built with two waterfront lots, when we say, I mean, you know, five years ago, the same, this, this, I think it was your predecessor, John Fullerton, had used the same CAMA reference about having five waterfront lots to deny a community dock at Shandy Lane. Then we approved this one, and now another one that's come up is not approved, and it all has to do with the number of waterfront lots. And that's the one thing that is not in sync between the two plans.
And I'll, if you, if that was part of the email that you sent this afternoon, I, I did not see that, but I'll be happy to take a look at the one that you mentioned. I am aware of two others that did not have five waterfront lots, and city staff did not approve that permit, or those permits.
I didn't include all that information in my email, because I thought we would have this discussion, but I'd be happy to talk to you and figure out what happened.
That, that would be wonderful, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Sharp?
Is the issue individual applications, or is the issue not having the same definitions from CAMA and our proposed LDO?
At this point, I think that when someone is ready to, if someone is ready to make a motion to move the land development code forward, they include the
CAMA definitions.
Amendment that, yeah. CAMA definitions will be included, that, and I can't remember which ones were missing and which ones were.
Waterfront community, we have a community boating facility, that definition is not inconsistent with the CAMA definition. Was there one other, Ms. Cortez? Waterfront lot? Absolutely.
So that the definitions are consistent with the CAMA plan?
Yeah. I just think that, to make sure that when you put boat, community boating facility, it makes sure that it references that in order to have a community boating facility, you must be considered a waterfront community, so that those are referenced to have the five contiguous lots.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Satterfield, does you have anything to add up there in the hot seat?
Not really, but I do believe that our, and I could be mistaken, but the standards in Section 18, does 203, may have some of the things that Ms. Cortez just mentioned as an example. That's where you see the five to 10 lot situation. One boat slip may allow per residential to a maximum of 10 boat slips per community boating facility. So I mean, as Ms. Thurston indicated, we'll look at the definition if that's the pleasure of, of the Planning Commission when you make a recommendation.
Thank you. Other discussion?
Any other questions or?
Questions for staff? Thank you, Mr., oh, I do have one question, as Mr. Harbeck referred earlier, this is not the end of our process. This is a giant step forward for Wilmington and for us to fulfill the wishes of all those thousands of people that participated in the 2016 comprehensive plan. So this is a major part of a long, long process, and I've been asked a couple of times, what is next when specifically, we are going to, I think, use the term debug, but to tweak some of the language, maybe, like, on the level, the specific levels that, such as what Ms. Cortez brought forward, what does that process look like?
Well, let me back up a second. And if the Planning Commission tonight recommends that we look at the definitions for CAMA to make sure there's not inconsistencies, we'll go ahead and do that, and when it's presented to council, we can do that.
Great.
So I'm not going to say that it, that we have to do another process for that. If that's what your direction is, we certainly will do that. As far as the debugging process, Glenn indicated it earlier, there is no perfect code. These codes are not set in stone and put on, on a shelf and never touched again. Each one of you, as a, and Planning Commission member, has considered amendments to the land development code, the current code we have, correct?
That's right.
I mean, we've had them periodically through the year.
Months ago, even.
Right. Some of those are applicant initiated, where an applicant, property owner comes and say, hey, I want to amend the code for XYZ, it goes through a public process, public vetting process, which includes a review by this board, and then a legislative hearing with our city council, ultimately, city council's call. It's a very similar process. What Mr. Harbeck was alluding to was there are, I believe, two separate things. One, if the code is adopted, let's say August 17th, September, whatever, and it goes into effect, you know, whenever council wants it to go into effect, there's an opportunity between the, the adoption date and the effective date for us to still find grammatical errors, inconsistencies, whatever. We will bring that to this board for recommendation, and then ultimately, it still has, it still involves, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, it still would involve public hearings or legislative hearings, the same way any other land development code amendment occurs. So we'd have to come to this board, you hear the public, we'll go to city council, they hear from the public. The same thing with anything afterwards. So now, so that's pre-effective date, and then post-effective date, we will continue to evaluate our code to make sure that it is accomplishing what it needs to accomplish. I guarantee you, within two months of the effective date, some, someone's going to walk in our office with a great development or a great plan for their property, and we're going to say, ah, this code don't allow that. This is something we want you to encourage, let us take this through the process. There's going to be that, it's inevitable. There is no perfect code, I believe Mr. Harbeck said it a couple of times. Is, it, it has to be fluid. There's going to be a use that comes in that we didn't think about, and we're either going to have to allow it, and the public's not going to like it, and we'll come in and try to address it, or we're going to have to, or we're going to have to allow it, and everybody loves it, we still need to address it. And that, so there's, there's, it has to be a fluid process. If we're going to wait for a perfect code, we're never going to get there. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that was outstanding. Thank you very much. Commissioner Sharp?
I understand it's a living document.
A little closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry. There we go. I understand it's a living document, it's a monumental task, and I'm really proud of where we are. I just have a question of, if, if we are reaching too far on some aspect and decide we need to pull back, does, does that vest the extent of the ordinance? Or does it only vest on those properties that are using that element? Did that make sense?
Do you want me to take a shot at it, or do you want to answer that one? If, my, my answer is going to be this, if there's a development that's going, if there's a plan going through the review process, and choose your words, it went too far, and we want to pull back on some of those regulations. If those regulations are too strict, I believe the applicant can wait for those code changes to occur, can still go through the plan review process. If they're approved, they can wait until this development's, the code is amended and can modify their plans if they choose to. There is something in our statute called, and we actually incorporate in our code too, called permit choice, which gives an applicant an opportunity to choose which set of regulations they want to go under, if they have a plan under review, and the ordinance changes before they get their approval. So you want to take a shot at it?
I thought that was a good answer, but Al, do you have a follow-up to that? If, if that didn't answer?
No, no, I, I really, I'm really talking about the hypothetical.
Sure.
I mean, we know that the best work's being done, and you test ideas, and some ideas are just on target, and some of them are a bridge too far. And so if we find that we have on one aspect of a 400-page document done a bridge too far, does that bridge become vested, or can we pull it back through the normal processes?
Right, we could pull it back to the normal processes.
I'm sorry? You can pull it back. Through the, you can, it can be pulled back through the, through amendment process. And here's an example, it's probably, maybe, maybe not apples or oranges, but here's an example, I can recall when the residential office zoning district was applied on Oleander. We initially called it Oleander Transition District, I believe. And three, four, five, six months into the district being established, we had a couple of realtors come to us, say, you know, we love the district, we really like what it's intended to do, we're having trouble, though, with the banks and mortgages, because we want to have residential, and the word residential was not in, or, so the banks needed to see that word residential. So we, we went through the modification process, and we amended our code to now call them residential office zoning district. It's kind of an apples and oranges thing, but that's an indication of where we saw something that wasn't working, and we initiated that text amendment to fix that problem for the, for the, those realtors who were established who were experiencing that, the issue with mortgages, or not being able to get a loan from the bank, basically, because the word residential was not in the zoning district.
Mr. Sharp, can I ask a question? Are you asking if a development is approved under this new ordinance, as adopted, and then we realize that particular provision is not right? Could we take out that provision? And I would say, yes, we can, but the development that got approved under that provision goes forward.
I understand that.
Is that what you're asking?
No, yes, I understood that. What, what hap, what I'm asking is, let's, let's, let's say we're trying to encourage transit, use of transit corridors, okay? And we propose a, a bonus for, and we haven't, for, for transit locations. We do that, and then, and we find out it's not going to work. It's a great idea, won't work in Wilmington. Does everyone who ha, in the transit corridor have that vested right for the bonus, even though they haven't come in with a specific project?
No, I would say no to that.
Okay, fine. All righty, fine.
I'm not an attorney, but that would be my, my understanding is the answer.
That's fine, okay. What I'm saying is, it's good to take chances, it's good to risk, risk, we need to explore, as long as we don't give away the shop. And so I'm, I'm comfortable with your collective answers. Thank you very much.
Sean, did I misspeak on that?
No, sir, I don't, I don't think you did.
As long as there's no application under review, or somewhat like a development agreement or a plan under review.
Yeah, there's longstanding case law in, in, just because something's zoned, it doesn't guarantee you a future property, right? I, I think that's one of the primary premises of zoning, because zoning changes from time to time, and that's, so what I'm hearing you say is, that's a good thing, needs to be adaptable when, when the situation's warranted.
And one caveat we do need to be aware of, though, is, is our state statutes, I'm sorry, I'll get a little closer, our state statutes have now, in a center, actually, in the land development code too, downzoning a property. If the property, if a downzoning comes in, so actually they're changing the use that's allowed on the district, or the density is allowed on the, on the property, or initiated by someone other than the property owner, then that can't really occur, it has to have the permission from the property owner to do. So let's say there's a use that's allowed in a community business, and someone, and one of our citizens don't like that use allowed in community business, they want to change the code to not allow that use any longer, they have to get permission from everybody that's owned community business for that. That doesn't apply to the city, if the city chooses to change it and be the applicant for it, but if, if a property owner, he wants to change the density, or downzoning someone's property, they have to get permission from the property owner. State statute, states that now, and we have actually incorporated in our code, so it's clear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lennon?
Thank you. First of all, Ron, I know this has been your primary focus for a long time. Thank you, it's, it's a good product.
I hear it, but?
No, Glenn said it wasn't perfect, so I'm just going to reaffirm that.
Just messing with you, John.
And I appreciate the, the commentary on the need for tweaking and to recognize the imperfections. What I worry about are the projects that none of us can dream of right now that may come in. What I also worry about are the projects that won't even come in because of their interpretation of the code without talking to, to staff. And so And so for what it's worth, my recommendation, first and foremost, I believe we need to move the ball forward. But I also think we need to formalize how we tweak, to use Glenn's words, the plan both after passage, between passage and implementation, and then also after implementation. And so my recommendation for consideration is to not have implementation until at least the end of the first or second quarter of next year, so that everyone has an opportunity to look at it and to understand it, and that any projects that come in during that time are run through two filters, the existing code and the new code. Because I believe that'll help give all of us, particularly staff, some data to look at. You know, are there things that may be a problem going forward? The second part is, post-implementation is to define some periods of time, whether it's three months, six months, 24 months. But the council, my suggestion, mandate some sort of committee to get feedback from stakeholders and come back to the planning commission and staff to say, here are some issues we've identified, to your point, that the imperfections, the projects that we're preventing unintentionally, granted, so that we can then have a mechanism to tweak it instead of waiting for the problems to come up. So I think those would be the things I'd put out for consideration on this topic.
So you're saying above and beyond the current process of land development code amendment, that, which would be the formal process, but you're talking about being more proactive?
Yes, ma'am.
With a special committee?
Right. And Ron and staff may disagree, but in my experience, an amendment typically only comes up as a result of a problem or an inconsistency that's identified in the code. I'd love to see us, again, I'm more worried about the projects that don't come forward because of a misinterpretation of the code or a fear of the code that prevents them from coming up with a great idea. I was joking with somebody today, you know, somebody wants to open a pizzeria on the roof of an Airbnb in a, in landfall. I don't know. I mean, you know, right now, that sounds crazy. Five years from now, that might not be so crazy. Sure. Two years from now. So I just would like a way to formal, and I appreciate what everybody's saying, but I'd like a way to formalize that. You know, it's 40 years since we've changed it. I feel like there needs to be a formal process in place to evaluate it post-implementation.
When we did our land development code back in 2005, we committed to periodic co-cleanups. It was the term we used for about, for two years. Those that we felt like were more pressing, we took the more, a little quicker process. Those we felt like we could wait, we batched them, or we could. One of the ideas we've had floating around our office is the day after the code's adopted, we want to put a whiteboard, like a big, long sheet of paper on our window of our conference room on the third floor, so everybody can see it. And it's going to be a laundry list of potential changes we need to make in land development code from day one. And was asked, well, why do we want to put it out front? So because I want to be transparent. I want everyone who walks in the door to recognize that we are committed to doing what we've said on finding and debugging, evaluating our code, debugging issues, et cetera. I can't prevent that person from not calling our office and getting an answer. And instead of talking to all their friends or whoever, you know, whoever may be, who don't really understand the code or don't interpret the code and hasn't applied the code, I know how that works. Well, I talked to so-and-so, and they told me this, so I chose not to. Call our office. I can't prevent folks from, I can't make people call our office. I don't know who those people are that may be doing that. But also, and put in my goals, gave to Glenn last week, having a minimum of two educational opportunities of meeting with the designers, developers, property owners, whomever, about our new code and talk about whatever issues. Maybe it's street preservation, maybe it's about processes, maybe it's about our street fundage requirements, signage, whatever the, whatever topic we need. Maybe it's more often, maybe it's more than two. But that's why I put a minimum of two. It could be five, it could be seven, it could be three. Because we want to get it out there. We want to understand what the issues are. We may not know of an issue, though, and the point about you're sometimes so reactive. But we may not know what's the problem until the problem comes to us. We've done that last two or three years. We've identified some developments came to us. It was revealed as an issue of achieving a goal that was, we agreed with, and we initiated those text amendments. We don't know it's an issue sometimes until we're aware of it being an issue. It may look fine on paper. We may not be aware of a use or a hurdle, an obstacle for one particular development. And as we, if that's unveiled, we also have to take in consideration, if we make the change for this one, what's the impact for the other 10? Is that something we can live with? Or is it something we maybe, we maybe we figured out an exception? Maybe it's a special use permit or something for this, for site specific. Does all that make sense? So it really depends on what the topic and the issue is. We want to evaluate, we know this is a continual evaluation process. It's just not going to sit on our shelf or on our table or virtual shelf, and we're not going to look at anymore. Brian's already asked his staff to start evaluating it and trying to, you know, and if they see inconsistencies, let us know. So I mean, that's the commitment that we've made internally to try to identify issues.
Mr. Lennon, I have a question. I'm trying to fully understand your concept. Explain for me again what, how you would see things maybe a little differently in your model. What would, what would be the case after the effective date? And I think you said you're looking for an effective date that wouldn't happen until the first or second quarter of next year? Is that what you were saying? I knew you said implementation. Is implementation the same thing as effective date for you? Is that where you?
I need to get my thesaurus out. So council obviously is the final word. I'll use the word effective date. So if the effective date, but yes, I'm suggesting that the effective date not be until the first or second quarter. Because I think that there, again, are so many things that are in this document that I think we all understand. The outside community, development community, has been given an opportunity to look at it, but a lot of things have come up. And the reality is, we're not going to know until projects come in. That's why I suggested running projects that come in during that time through both. I think it'd be a good exercise for everybody to see where problems may come up before it's actually.
I think, I appreciate your explanation. It helps me a lot. My concern would be is that if we push back the effective date that far into the future, we won't be providing affordable housing. We won't be reducing our parking standards. We won't be improving our tree protection standards. We won't be moving the needle on all these different issues that really need to be moved. We've got problems with our code. The lot and a half requirement for our accessory dwell units is a killer. And so all those issues, I would hate to see them, I'm just speaking from the heart here. I would hate to see those real needed improvements in our code delayed if the effective date were to put off that far. And obviously, it's up to council. We can certainly convey, or maybe council's watching right now, for all I know. We can certainly convey that perspective to city council. But ultimately, it will be city council that will determine what the effective date might be. And that could be this fall, or it could be, could be first quarter next year. It's really going to be their call. So did I miss something there? Am I misinterpreting?
No, and I appreciate your point. And as you say, council, obviously, it's their determination. I'm just one voice speaking out. I guess if I had to summarize this topic, it's just, I would love to see some formalization of how issues, once they're identified in the LDC, are addressed. And again, no negative reflection at all. But in my experience, typically, they aren't addressed until a problem crops up.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see something formalized to where it's more proactive. So that's, that's it.
Sure. I appreciate that feedback.
Commissioner Sharp?
The other, the other side of that, of course, is that citizens are watching this process. And they have put their hearts in following something that's going on for two years. It's unrealistic to ask them to keep monitoring this process. It's not their job. They're not developers. They're just neighbors, and they're concerned on how they live. So I think pushing any effective date off puts a hardship on the, on the individual citizens throughout the city. My other comment is on keeping this whiteboard. Not only would the whiteboard allow for developers to identify problems that may be occurring, but I would hope that citizens and other groups would also be able to highlight things on the whiteboard. And so the process is fair and just as it goes forward.
Sure. And if any comment, citizen has such that they want to contact us about it, we will add it. I mean, it's, I want it visible so people understand what it is.
I just wanted a clarification.
Absolutely.
The whole process, the whole public process.
Absolutely. And just to your point about citizens following this process, I know several, two or three at least, the folks who have made comments that you've been provided or email me occasionally, say, so what's the status? Primarily because they want to build accessory dwelling units. And they're waiting for those standards to change so they can then build a accessory dwelling that they can't currently build, because lot size, for the main reason. And if the code currently, if the code date is implemented, Glenn touched on a couple of things, but subdivision review board will still remain intact for those properties that are projects that comply with the regulations. We'll still have special use permits for 80-something uses. And the special highway overlay district, which we have heard concerns from the development community for many, many years, still applies until this code becomes effective. So the parking standards, and how to have a minimum parking standards, and how they can be detrimental for redevelopment and infill, still would be, you know, they're not effective. So that still would prevent those projects from moving forward. So there's a numerous, many, many situations that if this code isn't adopted, that we still have to, sorry, you have to wait till March or April or January, or whatever the timeframe may be. So it does work both ways.
So the other way, and I appreciate that, and I do hear you, and the ADUs are a great example of that. I don't know when I was going to ask this question, but I'll go ahead and ask it.
Sure.
The 400-pound gorilla for me of the unknown is the Bradley Creek watershed. And I know everybody's tired of me asking about it, but I'm going to ask again. In the city's presentation, and I went back and watched the video, and I appreciate you sending it to me again.
Sure.
It was made very clear that it was about quantity, not quality. I heard that referred to. And I understand the reason for that, because the state controls quality. But in the, in the, in the presentation material, out of the two bullets, there are, the term is used, Bradley Creek is the only stream subject to non-SA standards. Well, SA standards is an environmental control mechanism that the state has put into place. And then the third bullet refers to the highest level of pathogens. Again, it's about, it's about environment versus quantity. The same thing on another slide. One of the bullet points actually says, does not impact flood control requirements. And that is very confusing to me, because if it's about quantity, not quality, what does that mean? And, sorry, do you want me to wait? Because the reality is, I don't think anybody on staff can tell me what the impact would be within this gigantic area on a development opportunity. And I heard also said that 92% of the land within this watershed area has been developed. Okay, well, we're all thinking about today. Think about the projects we've approved here in this room over the last six months, and somebody gets together, buys six lots, tears down the houses, and puts in a more dense infill project. Well, that could happen here too. But can it happen here with these stormwater requirements? Because the volume restrictions in SA versus SC are three times as high in terms of rain events. So I really, this is the thing, this is my 400-pound gorilla right here, because I've yet to hear a sufficient answer as to how this is going to help us. And I can think of a whole lot of ways it's going to hurt us.
Sure. And Mr. Rob Gordon with our engineering department is here. He will be better at trying to respond to your, that 400-pound gorilla question than I will.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll do my best. I know there was a lot of points that you made there, and I'll do my best to try and, to try and address, you know, each one of them. But the first one is the misconception about water quality versus water quantity. This is a water quality change, not quantity. The water quantity requirements are not changing. That's your flood control requirements. Your 10-year storm, your 25-year storm, those are not changing. They're the same in Bradley Creek as Hewlett's Creek and every other stream in the city. Those are what generally drives the size of these stormwater control measures. The change in Bradley Creek is a water quality requirement, and it is intended to promote infiltration, which is specifically targeting the pathogens that we're seeing in higher levels in the Bradley Creek watershed. So that was, I guess, the first question there. I don't know where along the line there was a misconception. This is a water quality change and not a quantity change.
Can I ask you a question on that? Because this is, and if I misheard on the video, I apologize. But having said that, is that legal? I thought the state of North Carolina controlled water quality.
Commissioner Lennon, let me take a brief shot at that. And I'll let Rob jump in, because he's more, has more subject matter expertise than I have. But Wilmington has a local federally mandated water quality program that is very similar in most respects to programs implemented by the state. But in consultation with NCDEQ, since we're federally mandated, we are sort of outside some of the parameters and have the authority to implement supplemental regulations, if that makes, if that makes sense. I'll leave it at that. And if you have follow-up questions, I can try to elaborate a little bit.
So SA and SC are state terms or federal terms?
Well, they're classifications of streams. There's no correlation to, between SA and a requirement. It's just if, generally in the past, if a stream was classified as SA, they had one standard that applied to them. If they were classified anything other than SA, they had a different standard, a lower standard. There's only one exception to that, and that's the ORW, which is Howe Creek, which is the highest standard. That doesn't apply and is not proposed to apply to Bradley Creek. But what we saw is that the water quality results, so that's, that's been in place for some 30 years, you know, since the water quality rules were implemented by the state in the late 80s. And what we're seeing is that the monitoring data, at least in our region, is showing that Bradley Creek levels are elevated. Well, coincidentally, it's the only watershed that has been subject to the lower standard historically. So that was, and the main, sort of, the main issue that's at play with the, what has historically been referred to as the SA requirements, I mean, we're calling them Program A and Program B, but I mean, we all know that that's the rules that historically have applied to SA, is the infiltration component. And that's what, you know, what studies have shown most recently by Dr. Malin and some of his staff at UNCW in 2019, is that these infiltration systems reduce those pathogens. And that can have an impact on the, you know, hopefully on the monitoring data. It feels like we need to do something to sort of keep, to sort of stop this trend, this upward trend that we're seeing in pathogen levels in the monitoring data in Bradley Creek.
And I appreciate that. And I don't want anyone to think for one second that water quality is not important to me, because it is. I guess your last phrase creates the greatest level of fear for me, which is, we have to do something. I'm paraphrasing, but that's basically what she said. And I, I just still, and I'm one voice, and I will go with the group here, but nobody can tell me what this means for the future of development in this watershed. You're talking about something that's a mile wide, right? Half a mile either way? That's a huge area. And the numbers of 11,000 rental units and 13,000 single-family homes, and we're taking out a big chunk, I'm not saying we can't develop within it, but I think we're going to be increasing the cost. but I think we're going to be increasing the cost and potentially prohibiting development within that corridor. And I don't respectfully think anybody can disagree with me because nobody can show me what the impact to a project will be in that corridor. That's concern number one. Concern number two, and I appreciate the attorney's answer, but I don't know, what I heard was we're under some federal thing, but we're taking on a state classification. And I, maybe I heard that wrong, but to me, SA waters are a state classification.
You're correct.
Okay.
The code isn't trying to reclassify the designation of Bradley Creek. What the code, at least my understanding of it, is making regulations to the land surrounding it. It's not an effort to reclassify Bradley Creek. That classification did come from the state. So, I didn't want to mislead you there.
Okay, but it's, but it's the city's attempt to regulate water quality.
That is correct.
I still don't think that's legal, but I'm not a lawyer.
I mean, it's the same set of requirements that's applied to Pages Creek, to Futch Creek, to Hewlitz Creek, to Whiskey Creek, you know, on down, all up and down the ICW for thirty years, so.
Who applied those standards, though?
Who applied, the state has historically applied those standards, but within, since 2010, the city has applied those standards to the, you know, the development within the city limits.
But have they changed them?
Have we changed?
In the last ten years?
The no stormwater requirements have changed within the last ten years.
Okay, so I guess where I'm going is, this is the city's first attempt to increase water quality regulations. Okay, I think that's problematic, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Goins?
Rob, before we step down, I have a question for you.
Sir?
I mean, in the development, we're talking about these stormwater and infiltration systems. In my opinion, I mean, the infiltration system, we're trying to promote the, just the standard one, I mean, those are generally cheaper than digging these big stormwater ponds that take up a big portion of developments if they're needed. So, if we're trying to promote these infiltration systems, don't they generally help developers? Is that not kind of the goal of this?
Yes, I mean, if a site has good soils, we expect this to have a negligible impact on development. If a site has poor soils, the way the SA rules are set up, is they have, you know, they have to filter the, you know, they can build a pond just like they would in any other watershed throughout, you know, anywhere, and they have to filter it through eighteen inches of sand. That's the sole difference of what the requirements of non-SA and SA. So, I mean, we don't see this as being a particular impact, but yes, to your point, I mean, generally speaking, if the soils are good and the infiltration is there, it is not a difficult, you know, standard to achieve.
So, like, just by enforcing this, I mean, it shouldn't, if there's poor soils, it will be a big cost, but on all the good soil sites, this won't be that big of an impact on development. Do you agree, or?
Yeah, I, yes, I agree. And I think, again, to reiterate the point, is the, every stormwater system that's designed is designed for two functions. It's designed for water quality and water quantity, flood control. And it's the flood control component that generally drives the size of these systems. And that isn't changing. It's the same as it was before. It's only that water quality volume that's incorporated into that design. Again, it is easier to, well, I think a lot of the resistance to the SA requirements sort of, you know, go back to the SA rules of the early 2000s, where in SA watersheds, in order to meet those standards, you had to put the water in the ground, you had to infiltrate it. It was a requirement. So, on sites with poor soils, they had a genuine hardship where they had to find good soils and get the water there, or they couldn't develop. And nowadays, there's a lot more sort of tools in the toolbox available to meet those standards. As I mentioned, you know, you can do a pond in SA waters, you just have to treat the outflow from that a little bit more than, but whereas, you know, fifteen years ago, you couldn't do a pond. So, you got to the point on some sites where you couldn't develop. And I think that's the resistance, that's sort of the reputation that the SA rules have, is that they've got this reputation of being, oh my gosh, there's going to be some site you just can't develop. I mean, I would challenge anyone to bring me a site in recent memory where that's been the case. It's just, you know, there's just a lot more ways to meet that standard now.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Gordon, you mind if I ask you one, just one clarification point?
Yep.
For a redevelopment site that has been, just for example, it was developed and had a prior footprint that was, say, fifty percent impervious, would a redevelopment, as I understand it, a redevelopment would be able to rebuild to that same footprint without additional standards? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. They would be allowed to redevelop the, an equivalent amount without application of any standard at all. That's a state mandated rule.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodruff? I wanted everyone to speak on. No comment from Commissioner Woodruff? Okay. All right, thank you for the great discussion and questions. Any other, I don't see any other hands raised or comments coming, so what is the will of the commission? Commissioner Bowman?
I'd like to thank staff for their hard work on this. I know it involved a great deal of effort and distractions from the regular duties, and I think we got a better product than we would have had with our original consult. So, I favor the adoption of this ordinance and the repeal of the old ordinance, and I defer to city council on any sort of decisions related to rollout or beta testing or whatever. We're an advisory commission to them. So, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion, but do we feel like everybody has had fair comment time?
It appears so to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, then, I would like to move to approve Agenda Item Two, which is the amendment of the city zoning map.
Let's do, let's start with number one.
I only got one. Hold on a minute. Give me just a moment, sorry about the distraction. I thought.
It was in the first email?
Oh, it was in the first email from AMB, okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. I didn't get that printed, but I have it on my screen. I move to approve Agenda Item One, which is the adoption of the new land development code, case number LDC dash one dash seven twenty-one, and that this request is reasonable and consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington, Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. The Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable and in the public interest. And the new land development code implements many policies and recommendations of the city's Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to street frontage standards, tree preservation, improved stormwater regulations, residential compatibility standards, and graceful density. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommends approval of this request, and I will add one minor caveat, if I may, that I have no problem with staff working with Commissioner Cortez on some fine-tuned language before rolling forward to city council with this motion.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve item number one. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sharp, thank you for your second. And we will do a roll, call, vote. Commissioner Bowman?
Aye.
Commissioner Cortez?
Aye.
Commissioner Goins?
Aye.
Commissioner Lennon?
Aye.
Commissioner Lyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
And Commissioner Woodruff?
Aye.
All right, we are unanimous in our recommendation to move the LDC forward. Thank you. And on to item number two, we had, that was, the presentation from the staff was included earlier on this item, so we won't have, unless you had something to add, Mr. Satterfield, we won't have an additional presentation.
That is correct. No additional.
Thank you. Discussion on item number two? I better read it first, how about that? It is to amend the City of Wilmington zoning map to incorporate changes as presented during the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one legislative hearing that are consistent with the adoption of the new land development code. Our commissioners on the screen froze. Are they still with us? Are you still with us? Okay, they're back. Any discussion on item number two? All right, Commissioner Sharp?
Mine is a question.
Okay.
So, the presentation that was represented was the two comparative maps that delineated the zoning, the zoning changes from about three weeks ago.
We have the interactive zoning map, which I believe you're referencing there, one that's available online with the slide bar. Also, Miss Hughes had a presentation at your June twenty-fourth meeting. I want to say there was fifteen or so slides that detailed the changes that I kind of quickly went over a few minutes ago.
Okay, fine. So, with that clarification.
What is the will of the commission?
I would make a motion to approve item number two, request amendment to the city zoning map, case number LDC dash one dash seven two one. The Planning Commission consistency and reasonableness statement. I move the approval of this request as reasonable and consistent with the objectives and the policies of the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington, Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. The Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable and in the public interest because these map changes are necessary for the adoption of the land development ordinance. The proposed map amendments may make the map consistent with the policies related to mixed-use development, bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, historic preservation, and land use and transportation. The map amendments are an integral part of the functionality of the new land development code. Therefore, I recommend, the Planning Commission recommends this approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp has moved for approval of item number two. Do we have a second? Commissioner Cortez has seconded, and we will go to a roll call vote for item number two. Commissioner Bowman?
Aye.
Commissioner Cortez?
Aye.
Commissioner Goins?
Aye.
Commissioner Lennon?
Aye.
Commissioner Lyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
And Commissioner Woodruff? All right, another unanimous recommendation to move this along. So, thank you to the staff, especially our leadership, Mr. Harbeck, Mr. Satterfield, Ms. Hughes, and please pass along our gratitude and admiration for everybody who's worked so hard on this project. I know it's been a lot longer for you all even than it has been for us, and we are really proud of the work that we've all done together, and especially how hard you all have worked to pull this through and listen to the concerns of the public and the recommendations from Planning Commission and directives from the city council. So, we are very grateful for your work.
I would like to say thank you for those words, but I also want to thank each one of you and some of the members who are no longer serving. Each one of you, particularly the last few weeks, you've taken time away from your work when you do, you know, those of you who are working, to attend day meetings. And I know you spent time talking to folks about this code, and I know you've returned, you know, you've spent some time in the code itself, trying to learn about it, and that's when you're doing that, you're taking time away from your family or from your employer. And I just want to thank you for your commitment and thank you for your support.
Item number three, items from the commission. The only thing I want to mention is that next month, we move, we are scheduled to go back to city council chambers in Thalian Hall, and there will be no virtual option there. They don't have the capacity for that, so that will be an in-person meeting. Any other items from the commission? Okay, item four, item from, anything from the staff?
I would just remind everybody here and at home that really as of today, we will schedule the next stage in this process before the city council at their meeting on August So, we appreciate your hard work and opportunity to get this before city council in a couple weeks, really. What, two weeks from yesterday?
Great.
Thank you.
Seeing no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Lennon has moved to adjourn. Do we have a second? Commissioner Woodruff has seconded, will take a voice vote. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all so much. Have a great evening.